Okay, it's six o'clock on October 11th, 2022, and I will call this meeting of the Chelmsford Select Board to order. Would you please join me in the pledge?
Aye.
For the ladies to comply by the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we have our public service announcements.
For our first one, we have an influenza clinic, vaccine clinic, Chelmsford Senior Center, October 13th, from 3:30 to 7:00 PM. 3:30 to 4:30, there are seniors, 65-plus only, please. And then after the 4:30, it's open to everyone, adults 19 years and older. And that, again, is at the Senior Center at 75 Grotton Road. And we request you pre-register. And that's at home.caller.com/vaccine，请 register slash Chelmsford. If you go to the Department of Health website, it's actually right on the Department of Health website, nice and easy. So Chelmsford, go to the Department's, Department of Health, and there you'll see a link on their main page to register. We have a second clinic that's at the Chelmsford Town Hall Gymnasium, October 18th, and that's 4:00 to 7:00 PM. It's open to everybody, 19 years and older, and that's here, 50 Billerica Road. But it's in the rear of the building. You'll see there's a ramp that leads up to the old gym, and so you go in there for that vaccine. And again, you can register on that date on the Department of Health also. Final notice, Chelmsford Friends of the Library Book Sale, October 14th, this Friday, from 9:00 AM to 7:30 PM, Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 to 5:00 PM, and Sunday, October 16th, 9:00 to 1:00 PM. That's in the Town Hall, again, same place as the Vaccine Clinic, downstairs, here at 50 Billerica Road, park in the back, and you go up the ramp, enter behind Town Hall. There's a large selection of fiction, non-fictions, children's books, DVDs, and CDs.
Okay. Next up, we have public input. Is there anyone that would like to speak during public input? And I'll remind you to state your name and address for the record, and we try to limit comments to three minutes.
Chris LaValley, Tan Edgewood Street, Precinct 10, Town Meeting Rep. I did want to speak to the zoning articles that you've got later on in the agenda. I didn't know if you wanted me to speak to that now or later.
So for the board, I know we have Paul Haverdy coming in a little bit later, and we also have representatives from the Planning Board coming in by 6:30. So it would be my preference to defer this to the warrant article until we, so we can have an interactive discussion. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Can we wait?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I'm Helen Blazzioli. I'm at 19 Augusta Way, and I'm a Town Meeting Rep. And I'm not sure if this is where I should be talking or not. And I want to talk about the award that, and the meeting that we had just taken place and everything with our town that's been going on. Is this when I do it, or do I come to a different session?
Yes, that's not on the agenda, so you would do it during public input.
I would. All right. I've been a resident of Chelmsford for 25 years, and I have been an arbitrator for State Farm Insurance for 25 of my 31 years that I was with them. I also did a look at litigation for them. I am not an attorney, so I want to get that out straight. I'm just a citizen and a resident of Chelmsford. I got voted in a couple of times on my integrity that I've had and what the town has seen me do with the tax and with UMass property. And so when it came up on the 4th of February 2019, and we ended up with getting a vote of no not to fund the police, I thought arbitration awards were to be, that was the truth, but found out later that the only people that had to agree to it were the Select Board and the Town Manager. I voted no. I voted no when I kept saying at my table, but it's an arbitration award. But I did not understand that night. I was not given the full facts. I was only given the dissension, and that, to me, was not right. These policemen were put in the background, but the citizens who were put of Chelmsford, it's cost us a lot of money. And I'm just here to say that I really, really, really am upset about this. And I'm not sure as a Town Meeting Rep, that going forward, and I'm sure there's other Town Meeting Reps that feel like me because I've talked to them, and none of them are going to come up and open their mouth because I'm going to get thrown out of town tomorrow. But how do we take what we're told up there, and when it comes time to vote, and know that we've got all the facts at one time? I don't know how we do that. I want to know how the Select Board expects us to get all the information, and how do we make sure that we get it? You are the only five people that can make sure that the Town Manager gives us all of that information all the time. And it's sad.
One minute.
It's an essential part of the well-being of the town of Chelmsford that we have all these facts.
One minute.
So if, what I'm asking you is to please think about the code of conduct and what is in there, and realize that you're making decisions for the entire town. They voted you to do the right thing. We're asking you to do the right thing, or I'm asking you. But I'm sure there's plenty of people behind me. So please, think about what you're doing when you make a vote coming down the road, because it's important to each and every one of us that live in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public input?
There goes the microphone.
That's because I'm not in.
Have you come up here and adjust it for me? Madam Chair, can I approach for one second? I have something to give you. For the record, I'm Sam Chase. I live at 5 River Meadow Drive here in Chelmsford. Don't want me to speak? I'll speak anyway, okay? Madam Chair, members of the board, regarding the recent decision in the Sergeants Union case, I sent you a four-page email on October 4th, and I'm here tonight to make sure that it gets into the public record by way of this meeting. Now, I'm not going to read the email into the record because of its length, but I will summarize the main points. The public can now read executive session minutes showing that you got regular status updates from the town's labor attorney during the course of the Sergeants Union case. Those minutes show that you were fully informed as to what is considered normal JLMC arbitration procedure, and that you were told that Terry and Flanagan's actions were nothing out of the ordinary and entirely consistent with JLMC arbitration practices. And based on that, you continued to defend the town against the union's charges to the tune of $250,000. Presumably, you were hoping for a favorable ruling. If at any time you felt that the town had gone down the wrong path, you had a duty to stop the proceeding, set the record straight, and come to terms with the union. But you didn't do that. The town absolutely must abide by any adverse legal ruling it gets, but that doesn't mean you have to agree with it. When you got that ruling, you acted like the town was in the wrong all along. Watching your September 29th meeting, it's too easy to get the impression that some members of the board were hoping for a negative outcome. When the school department got an adverse DLR ruling in June, here's how they reacted. Quote, "We are in receipt of the decision from the Massachusetts Department of Labor Relations hearing, Officer, and while we are still reviewing the document, we can say that we are extremely disappointed in and wholeheartedly disagree with the majority of findings." Now, that's the normal reaction that any defendant would have if they believed in the merits of their case. And, like the school department, I wholeheartedly disagree with the majority of findings in this decision. School officials defended Superintendent Lang despite the fact there were seven charges specifically directed at him. They made no move to reprimand or otherwise discipline him. They defended themselves, their department, their employee, their integrity, their reputation, and that is the right thing to do. They supported their employee in the face of specific charges of wrongdoing. You, on the other hand, seem intent on disciplining an employee where the charges of wrongful conduct are at best vague and unspecific. Your apparent insistence in wanting to find fault with the Town Manager despite the lack of compelling evidence does not sit well with me, and it should not sit well with any clear-thinking, fair-minded Chelmsford resident. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public input? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to committee vacancies, which seems to have gone.
So for the week of October 11th, 2022, the following vacancies are available. Our Arts and Technology Education Fund Committee has one unexpired three-year term. Viscile Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one three-year term. The CCAA Advisory Committee is looking to fill one one-year term. Commission on Disabilities has one three-year term. Community Action Program has four seats available. Those are one-year terms. Community Preservation Fund Committee, one three-year term. Council on Aging has one unexpired three-year term and two three-year terms looking to fill. Cultural Council, two unexpired three-year terms. Holiday Decorating Committee has two one-year terms. Parade Committee, all applicants are welcome. Those are one-year terms. They end each July 31st. Permanent Building Committee has one three-year term. Public Records Advisory Committee has one one-year term, and Recycling Committee has one one-year term. If you're interested in serving on a board or a committee, please complete an online application available on the town website. For more information, you can contact the Town Manager's Office here at 50 Billerica Road, or you can email the Town Manager at tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov. And the phone number to reach out to the Town Manager's Office is 978-250-5202.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have the roadside vendor license for Central Congregational Church.
Hi, my name is Margie Disinger. I live at 15 Mansfield Drive. My husband and I have been members of Central Congregational Church for 15 years, and the church has been doing selling of Christmas trees and wreaths for 38 years. Dick Papenfuss has been in charge of it for the last 10 to 15 years and has decided to step down from chairing the committee. So my husband and I, Glenn, are going to be chairing the committee for the next couple of years. So we would, again, like to have the roadside vendor license so we can sell Christmas trees and wreaths, which is a major fundraiser for the church. Any questions?
Do you want me to make a motion? Any questions? Nobody has any questions. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
I'll second the motion.
I'll second.
You second. Mark will second. The motion is second. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have the one-day beer and wine license for the Hunting Disease Society of America. Do we have anyone there for the applicant?
Maybe online.
I'm not seeing any in the Zoom room either. Does the board have any questions?
We've done this before, so.
Okay.
Paul, make a motion to approve the application for a one-day beer and wine license for the Hunting Disease Society of America to be held at the Chelmsford Senior Center, 75 Grotton Road, on November 5th, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. And next up, we have the Armenian Church one-day license, and I don't see anyone here for that.
No, they don't usually come in or automatically.
Two one-day licenses, actually.
Any questions? So I'll make a motion to approve the application for one-day all-alcohol beverage license for St. Martin's Armenian Church located at 180 Westford, Old Westford Road, for both October 22nd, 2022, for their dinner dance, and November 19th, 2022, for the annual food festival.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Okay, Paul, so we have, we might need to take some things out of order here because I think Attorney Housler and Attorney Haverdy are running late.
Do we want to go with Sue Olson, number 11, the resident?
That's what I was thinking. So we're going to go to Agenda Item Number 11, which is the resident request for a resident advisory committee for North Chelmsford truck traffic. And Sue Olson, who was the one that requested this, is here in the Zoom room, if we have any questions. Sue, would you like to just provide clarification on what your suggestion was?
Sure. Well, when you look at this area as a whole, we're talking approximately 380 homes that are directly impacted, it doesn't include Scotty Hollow, with this truck traffic. I mean, that's a lot of people, a lot of opinions, a lot of questions, a lot of suggestions that could be made. My thought was perhaps we could form a Citizens' Advisory Committee to the Select Board or the Traffic Committee and bring some ideas to the board on what we could research and see if it would be a viable option for the town to consider, to just try to help to ease this traffic. We have, you know, I'm not sure even at this point what myself I can speak about as a resident. Can I go ahead and contact the Department of Health? Can I contact the Department of Transportation? Can, as a taxpayer and a resident of the town? Or do I need to have a better standing, you know, through a town board, like the Select Board, in order to do that, to get some questions answered? Because there are quite a few. We've got zoning questions, speed limit, there's a dust-like cloud that is traveling over Route 3 every day. I don't know what it is, or I'm sure it comes from the quarry. But, you know, things like that. Can I, as a resident, just go right ahead and call the Department of the DEP and have them come and investigate it? There were questions when the DOT came in a couple of years ago in regards to the legality of the town of Westford restricting the flow of truck traffic from the facility in Westford. Was it legal for them to do that on a state road? That question's been out there for many years. I don't know if there's ever been an answer to it. Those are just some of the things that I was thinking of. And, you know, looking to the Select Board, is it something that, I don't know if this has happened before with other sections of town. But I think at this point in time, with the number of years that have gone by, that, you know, perhaps we could set up a committee of, you know, seven, nine residents from all the different streets here that could represent this section of town to make some recommendations to the board.
So I think there were two things in what you said. One was, can you, as a resident, contact the Board of Health or the DEP with concerns? I think the answer to that is yes. Any resident can do that. So this, the topic of this discussion is, do we want to form the Resident Advisory Committee? And I think what you had brought up during public input last time was to, if we were to form a Resident Advisory Committee, might they be able to come up with some ideas and things that we haven't thought of?
Mm-hmm.
Three to five people, maybe.
Any thoughts?
I guess my question would be, does it have to be an official committee? I mean, Sue, you seem to be very active in discussing this with your neighbors as it is. And as Virginia said, you know, you do have the ability to talk to a lot of these state agencies without our permission, basically. So, I mean, I guess, I don't know, maybe I would be hesitant to form another committee, keeping in mind, you know, if, depending how big it is, you have to make sure you have a quorum for every meeting. You have to make sure you post your meetings. You have to make sure you keep minutes of your meetings and they get posted. You know, I don't want to get you into too much administrative stuff when you could be out just talking to your neighbors maybe and coming up with ideas that you could then go back to us in a public input forum or some other method.
Formal agenda item.
Correct, yeah. I mean, that's just my thoughts on it. But, I mean, if you want to go ahead, then, you know, I'm not going to stop you from.
Or even appoint a couple of residents to the Traffic and Safety Committee.
Well, the Traffic Safety Committee is, right now, I believe, is basically town officials.
It is, right.
It's not a public committee. It's a manager's advisory committee. So we don't keep minutes. We don't have agendas. We don't, you know, it's, and that's perfectly allowable under the open meeting law. So again, that would transform that committee, and I think.
But they do take suggestions.
They will take suggestions. They'll take all the suggestions and input anybody wants to provide for us. And again, either through this board or directly. And I think, and I think over the years, we've answered a lot of those questions that we took notes of and had charts from, and will continue to do so. But I don't think it would benefit the committee to add committee to the committee, because there's work that the committee does that's beyond the scope of North Chelmsford that we cover.
I don't think there's anything wrong with three to five people forming a committee up there, and they see what's going on. They see everything. You know what I mean? Between all, between all the different members, they would see what was going on, and they could report to us whenever they.
Right. And George, I guess my question is, do they want it to be a formal committee? I mean, you know, they could go do that on their own without us having to do those appointments. I mean, you know.
Because if you make it formal, we have to point it, they have to keep minutes, you got to post agendas.
Yeah, as opposed to them just spending their time formulating what the good questions are, the concerns, and getting those to me right into the traffic and safety, filter through them, and make sure we get everything. But I think it should go through the committee.
Yeah. And the other avenue they have, they can utilize a state rep as well. If they want, for example, they want information from the DEP, you know, our state rep and senator are also a good resource that they could utilize as well to get direct information and a response. Because I think I sense your concern is, gee, would they listen to a resident of North Chelmsford? Well, they're going to listen to Senator Barrett's calling or their state rep from the, you know, from, North Chelmsford is on the phone. And so that could be another resource, Rue, for them as well.
So Sue, with those considerations, what, I mean, you had the initial suggestion. Do you, are you looking for something to be formalized where you're a public body and subject to open meeting law? Or would you prefer to see if they wanted to organize a neighborhood group and bring suggestions forward, where we would give you airtime for suggestions, or you would bring forward suggestions to the Traffic Committee?
Well, in thinking about it further, maybe, because we did have one meeting, but you can't find a place to meet, and you have to rent a hall to have a meeting. But I have put out some feelers, and there are some residents that are very interested in offering their opinion. And then bring, I guess we could do that, and then bring suggestions to the board, like you had suggested during a, you know, public input, or make more of a formal presentation. I just think at this point, we just have to do something more than what's being done.
If they, if they lack a place to meet, I'm sure we can make arrangements for them to meet at the police station community room, or even in this building, or a library meeting room.
Library meeting room, something, yeah. We can accommodate that. Senior Center, depending upon time of day. Yeah, so I mean, we.
Even the North Chelmsford Town Hall.
Yeah, the North Town Hall. Yeah. So I don't want that to be, for lack of a meeting venue.
We can help you with the meeting venues, what we're saying, Sue.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess the other thing, I mean, if you would like one, one member, you know, I wouldn't have more than two members of this board at your meetings if you, you know, if you, depending on the timing, if, you know, one or two of us might show up also. I mean, let us, you know, keep us informed. Obviously, we have a lot of other commitments too. But this is high on our agenda, too, to come up with a resolution to that area.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
So Sue, if the, if the group doesn't like that approach, and you, you know, you want to push for a formalized committee, public body, I guess let us know.
I will. I'll come back. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any update on arrival times, Paul?
No, I haven't heard from Paul Haverdy.
Okay, so. We could do the.
I want to mute.
Special.
Whoops.
Let me, let me mute that.
I said it a little too late.
Okay.
She's going to be mortified.
We don't need, do we need counsel for Agenda Item 13, Paul? Yeah, we do, don't we? We could sign the warrant for the state election?
Yeah, you can do that. 14.
Let's go to number 14. Whoops, she just came unmuted again.
Yeah, the town clerk has provided the board with the warrant for the November 8th state election, and so the formal actions for the board to, to approve and sign the warrant for the November election.
Okay. Any comments? We don't really have a choice in this one.
No, I think there'll be.
I think so.
Take a motion?
So this is on, which one, 13?
14.
So I'll make a motion to approve and sign the warrant for the November 8th state election.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Next up, we'll do Town Manager bid awards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items for the board's confirmation this evening. The first one is for the Dunshire Drive culvert replacement. As summarized in the documents from the Public Works Department, there were seven bidders for the, perform this work, and the low bidder was J.J. Phelan and Sons and Company Incorporated at $371,000. And so again, we're seeking confirmation of that award. As you can see, there was another bid right in that price range, and then the prices went up. So everything is checked out positively, so we'd ask the board to confirm that bid so we can get started on the culvert project.
And what's the timing?
We'll do limited work this fall, but it's really now more likely going to be into the spring.
Paul, what drives the huge disparity between the low bid and the high bid? Is it labor rates, or?
Well, what happens is oftentimes is you have companies who have plenty of work, but they'll throw. they'll throw a bid in in the event of trying, of sort of throwing a lottery ticket in that if you, you know, you get the high bid, you've, you would schedule it in and make a much larger profit. So that's kind of what you see occasionally.
So I'll make a motion that we award the Devonshire Drive culvert replacement bid to J.J. Fallon and Sons in the amount of $371,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the second one is for the Barney Playground Drainage Improvements and Site Work. In that project, it was five bids that were, were received. The lowest qualified bid was from N E L M Corporation Construction in the bid price of $178,000. And you can see they submitted all the necessary bid documents. And again, you can see, you know, that the price seems to be solid. There were two other bids, you know, within $20,000 of that bid price. So again, we'd recommend the, seeking the board's confirmation of N E L M Corporation Construction, $178,000.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for Barney Playground Drainage Improvements to N E L M Corporation in the amount of $178,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Okay, you want to do your town manager?
Yeah, go to my report, yeah. Rather succinctly, the first one is we, we did receive from the state the first quarter distribution of meals and rooms tax revenue. And, and as you can see in the chart to the far left, the hotel room tax occupancy is staying solid. Again, most of that is because the state is occupying significant units for housing of homeless individuals, so the revenues were strong for that quarter. Again, it's sort of replicating where you were in 2020 and in 2021. And then for the meals tax, again, you know, I think it's the highest quarter we received, which reflects two things. One is the higher price for meals, which the tax is based upon, and again, the fact that it was a strong quarter for the economy in terms of the summer vacation period with good weather and so forth. So we wanted to form the board of that, and as you said, we will next receive the second quarter distribution at the end of December. Next item I have is local bottleneck reduction grants middle for Princeton and Richardson Road. We did receive correspondence from MassDOT dated September 27th, at which we were not funded for this project from the state. As they noted in their letter, they had a very competitive applicant pool. So again, we'll continue to pursue other funding revenues for that project, including the funding source that we do have from the recently approved project at 255 Princeton Street. So I just formally note that.
Think that having to do with the fact that they're doing the mile and a half, the paving of the two roads and things like that?
Yeah, I don't know. Like I said, they really didn't give any feedback on it.
That is really bad over there now.
And then the next item we have was a follow-up from public input at the last meeting from Mary Donovan, who is here, and had to do with the pet cemetery. And I didn't receive any documents from Mary, but I did reach out to the cemetery superintendent, David Boyle, and I reached out to Cemetery Commissioner John Souza, and I put some information in here. And I, we don't need to go through all the details, but I think the clear message from both David and from John is we do not want to introduce a pet cemetery in any of the town's existing human cemeteries. Obviously, there are statutory provisions pertaining to that in terms of town burial places, as well as the cultural and societal issues for that, as well as the limited burial space that the town has for its cemeteries. But to sort of pursue the next step further, as Mary noted, there is a pet cemetery that's provided by the town of Littleton, and it is under the direct supervision of the cemetery superintendent. And, and David Boyle was familiar with that. And I just want to highlight for the board what, how that works, and in, sort of summarize my discussions with David Boyle about this. They only, at a pet cemetery, they only accept cremations or cremains, okay? And there is no, only on level memorials. And all memorials have to be approved by the cemetery superintendent. And basically, the lots are usually, you know, eight inches by eight inches long, and you can't get double lots, eight by 16. But the rules are that there's no plantings, any live flowers or anything else only stays until the next grass mowing. And you'll see this come up repeatedly in the rules in Littleton. So why, for example, their rules say live flowers may be put on the graves if they'll be removed at the next grass mowing or when they wilt or lose their beauty, whichever comes first. Any ornaments or decorations placed on a grave will be removed at the next mowing and set into the reserve area. They do not permit curbing, corner posts, buttresses, wooden structures, mounds over graves, or any cans or similar articles. And they only allow one set of ashes in a one foot by one foot cremation lot, and up to four sets of ashes may be interned in a larger two by two foot lot. So basically, what it comes down to is, these are low maintenance facilities, meaning they, you know, they...
They mow them.
They mow them, and they mark them, and there's, there's very little in terms of, you know, extraordinary care in terms of beyond the routine maintenance. I think the big question in Chelmsford would be is, we don't have a land parcel that's easily identifiable. So I think, I guess, if anyone wishes to pursue this further, if, if they would either be interested in identifying a parcel, or if you charge me or others to identify a parcel, if that's what you want, or somehow, that would be the next logical step, if this wished to be pursued. So that's sort of what we found out is, is that it does exist, it exists, as Mary noted, in Littleton nearby. And again, they're, they're meant to be respectful places, but again, the rules are very clear in terms of the, the ability to effectively maintain those facilities. So that's...
Do you know in Littleton, is it a, is it a cemetery that's maintained at little or to no cost to the town because of the...
Yeah, they, they do charge it, and it was, it was, it was, it was left by a gift of land by, by a resident adjacent to an existing cemetery, and so that's how it's run. So again, obviously, you know, the, the things are real strict, cremations, you know, everything level maintenance and so forth.
But do you see it as a budget item in their annual...
I don't, I haven't seen it as a budget item. I mean, obviously, they do charge a perpetual care, you know, fee or such, such as what you would have in this case. I don't have the legal documents of the deeds that they provide in terms of, you know, what the extent of runout is on that situation. But the other thing is, is you kind of wonder why the private sector doesn't do it. You know, in other words, you, you have a lot of facilities that provide animal care and so forth. You know, there's nothing, there aren't any rules, and that's what Mary noted, and she's correct, there really aren't any rules regarding pet cemeteries. But again, I think probably the problem in this part of the state is the high cost of land.
Land cost.
Yeah, the land cost, and that would really make it probably prohibitive to, to do that, because not only do you have to set aside the land, but also then have to maintain, care for it. But, so that's what I've been able to uncover thus far in terms of pet cemetery. And again, I'll wait for the guidance or, or input from the board or the community.
Just keep thinking of Stephen King.
Isn't this, wouldn't this be under the jurisdiction of the Cemetery Commission and not the board?
It needn't be. I mean, again, there's no rules. There's no state statute, there's no regulations. I'm not sure, I, I've not polled or visited with the Cemetery Commissioners to see whether they're ever interested, are interested in this, but it needn't be. You know, again, it's, it's sort of an unregulated area.
I mean, in the last year, we did get a bunch of little parcels donated to town. I don't know how big, the biggest one was, but...
Probably need a lot bigger than you think, if people worry more about their pets.
And you have to have parking, you know, you'd also want to have ways where there's parking and so forth. And then the last item I had is on the Chelmsford Forum reopening. Our original projection would be that the forum was, going back to the February town meeting where the 1.5 free million dollar project was approved, we originally envisioned a mid-October opening. We're probably three or so weeks behind that at this point, and it's really due to the supply chain issues in terms of getting the equipment, as well as National Grid on site. But the good news is, at this point, National Grid was out last week, they set the poll. That allowed the work today, which was the, today, the trench was open, the underground install was, 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 took place. So what now has to happen is National Grid has to come back out, and the inspector from Baruch has to come out and inspect the underground conduit cable. That gets, and then National Grid would then set the transformer. That schedule would be completed by next Monday. And then you basically have got two weeks of commissioning. And I know that sounds like a long time, but Simco, which is a company that will come out and, and activate the plant, and why that's, that also has to be inspected by the state because it's an ammonia-based system, which you may have recalled, there was an incident in Tewksbury not too long ago with, because ammonia gas is quite dangerous. But there is a procedure, and it's inspected by the state. That's expected to not take any longer than two weeks. And then once that's final approval, then it takes up to a week for the ice surface to, you know, to be formed and so forth. So again, at this point, the, the projected date is November 7th, but we're doing everything we can, including constant outreach to National Grid, to see if we can move this along. Because I think but for the National Grid workload, we probably would have hit our target date, because the, the contract and everything, you know, was completed on schedule. It's just, as we all know, and we've heard from many other residents, National Grid is just overwhelmed. And the thing that worked in our favor, you know, was we weren't sure if we were going to be further pushed back if National Grid had been deployed down to Florida. So we, you know, we're fortunate that they were able to perform the work. So I am keeping the Chelmsford Hockey Association, the forum operator, and any other interested party informed, you know, as events progress. But at this point, I know it's an inconvenience for those who play youth hockey, and, in terms of trying to get suitable ice time, and I know the high school's ready to get going, because beginning of November is when they kick off as well, in the show and Chelmsford High School. So again, we're hopeful that in a few weeks, we'll, we'll be there. And I'll keep you updated as events warrant.
Okay.
Did we want to, on the previous topic, did we want to give any instruction on the pet cemetery, or we just, that was it?
I guess, does the board want to, my, my only thought as the next step would, to be to give the Cemetery Commission some space to talk about it as a board, because they, they haven't been able to do that yet, right? Or as a body?
Maybe we just ask them to think about it?
Okay.
Get back to us.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't want to just leave that hanging.
Thank you.
Okay. And then under appointments, I just seek in the board's confirmation to appoint Joe Tierney to the Capital Planning Committee. I think many of us are familiar with Joe's excellent work in the Vinyl Square Committee, and this is a much more limited time of year approach, you know, November to December timeframe. And so I'd seek the board's confirmation to appoint Joe Tierney to the Capital Planning Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2023.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve Joe Tierney to the Capital Planning Committee for a one-year term that's expiring on June 30th next year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. I guess we should go ahead and do meeting minutes. I know Attorney Haverty was coming from another meeting, but I don't know where. So first up, we have the, the regular meeting minutes for September 19th. And I actually have an amendment to this.
This was actually a...
I'm sorry, this was the joint meeting, sorry. On page four, in this paragraph, I had submitted an edit to delete where it says that the policy be adopted by the Select Board and administered by the DPW. I had recommended deleting by the Select Board, because we've had the conversation many times that the Select Board doesn't adopt this policy. And I went back and watched the comment, it was one made by Ken, and he didn't bring up the Select Board, it was about the DPW. So I think that sentence should read, the policy be adopted and administered by the DPW following the public input sessions. So that's my amendment. Anybody have an objection to that? Any other amendments?
I'll second the amendment.
We didn't, we didn't get a motion yet to second.
Well, I thought you were making a motion by doing that.
I'll make a motion, and then you... I'll make a motion to approve the joint meeting of the Select, the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Planning Board from September 19th, 2022, as amended.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. And next up, we have the regular session minutes for September 26th. Any amendments before we take a motion? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular, the Select Board regular meeting minutes from September 26th, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. And then I have an announcement on determination of releaseability of executive session minutes. The following minutes were deemed releasable. October 1st, 2018, April 8th, 2019, July 8th, 2019, segments one and three, March 5th, 2020, segment one, June 1st, 2020, segment three, June 28th, 2021, July 22nd, 2021, July 26th, 2021, with a redaction, August 9th, 2021, segment one, August 9th, 2021, segment five, September 7th, 2021, segment one, September 13th, 2021, November 15th, 2021, segment two, May 9th, 2022, segment five, May 23rd, 2022, segment four, September 12th, 2022, and September 26th, 2022.
Madam Chair, I just received a message from Paul Haverty, he participates arrival at 7 o'clock, so it's about 15 minutes.
So do you want to go wild and do liaison reports, or do we want to take a break and come back at 7? Because I think we need him here for every other discussion.
Or you can do the two financial articles.
We can do that, sure.
Those are the two that you can do.
Good idea, Paul. So we're going to go to Agenda Item 12, Articles 14 and 15, correct?
Yes.
And I think I have your... That one?
Yeah, thank you. The matter of Articles 14 and 15, I've updated my motions on that based on two factors. One is the actual amount of free cash that was certified by the state, differed slightly from the projection that Town Accountant Darlene Lucier had reported to the board at the last meeting as a result of a special education assessment to the town at the end of the last fiscal year. So the amount was $3,418,001. So I, I reduced the appropriation on Article 15, the General Stabilization Fund, to incorporate that change to $1,089,782. Article 14 is the reduction of the FY23 property tax levy, and that number changed from $500,000 to $1,64,513. And that was the delta between the amount that was voted at the October 3rd special town meeting, the $335,487, you know, to achieve that net result of a half, a $500,000 reduction in the, below the levy limit for the free cash amount. So that, so when you take 500 minus $335,487, you come up with $1,64,513. I can report to the board, the Finance Committee considered these two articles at their meeting last Thursday evening, and recommended four to one with two absent on Article 14, and recommended five to zero with two absent on Article 15 as presented.
So are we only voting on two?
We're, yeah, we're going to vote on Article 14, revised, the revised Article 14 and the revised Article 15.
I have to say, I'm very disappointed in, in Article 14 and that amount. I mean, that's, we started out at a million, and then we reduced it to half a million, and now it's, you know, just barely $160,000. I, I just can't support that, I think it has to be more than that.
The, the net effect is the 500K though.
Yes, yes, yes. And that's sort of what I explained at the town meeting, the special town meeting of six or one, half dozen of another, is that, you know, ultimately, the voters will decide under the article, but that motion of $1,64,513 achieves the $500,000 target that the board had approved at its previous meeting.
That was the 500, but now some of it got chewed up.
Well, no, it's, it's the 500,000 less the $335,487. So what's going to happen is, is there'll be... So, what's going to happen is, is there'll be, there'll be at least 500,000 in unused levy capacity, which is that $35 saving that we discussed. It's just, it comes in two pieces. It's the piece on October 3rd, and then this amount at October 14th. They're all listed on the summary sheet that the town accountant submits to the state. So, the total would be the 500,000.
So, obviously, in this discussion, we didn't know that that's how the October 3rd meeting was going to go down. But what would make you more comfortable?
Well, I guess I still don't really get how you consider that. I mean, yeah, it's, I mean, it was supposed to be raised and appropriate, and then we ended up taking it out of free cash. And, I don't know, money has moved around. It seems just kind of, I won't say haphazardly, but, I don't know, it just happened so quickly at town meeting. And I don't think there was a full understanding of, that it wasn't going to really impact everything. But this, quite frankly, it looks like we're not giving much back to the taxpayers.
When it's presented, Paul, can you put some words around that?
Yeah.
To explain that the net is the 500K? And Pat, I also have the note that you wanted me to articulate that you would have supported the 1 million.
Yes, I mean, that was in the minutes.
And I'll still do, you, well, when we do recommendations, I'll still do that.
I mean, that's up to you. Okay, thank you.
But I'm just curious, like, how would you want that to read to get to a 5-0 vote here? Or 4-0, I mean, whatever. We'll get your yes vote. I mean, how much?
I mean, I guess I will, as long as Paul is going to explain it, that, you know, that if we look at that, it says $164,000, we should really consider it 500,000.
Right, you know, I will have slides that get deeper. This was just sort of a summary for the board, because we've been through this.
Put 500, and then parentheses, minus.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think it would be good if we sent a nice message to town meeting, and a clear one, then, but I'd be willing to work on that to get you to support it, that's what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't know how we'd do that.
We were 5-0 for the 500K.
Yes, we were.
Yeah, right.
Just with a statement that you would have supported the million.
Right.
So, are you...
I'm okay with it.
You're okay, as long as Paul explains it is the 500?
Yeah.
Net, or in the aggregate?
And that she wanted a million.
Yeah.
For the town, not for me.
No, I get it.
You don't need it, Pat.
Oh.
Tough times for everybody. All right, so I will recommend Article 14. Recommend approval of Article 14.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
And I will make a motion to recommend approval of Article 15, as explained, or as amended, however Paul's going to do it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think we already voted on that amount, but...
Yeah, but that amount changed.
That's because of the free cash certification.
Because that's definitely at least.
Thank you.
And I guess the only, I think, the estimate, it'd be referrals.
Well, we could take a five-minute break.
We could take a break.
Could we do number eight? It's just the sewer flows. I mean, it's nothing...
Yeah, I just didn't, it kind of flowed into the sewer discussion. That was kind of...
Yeah.
Take a five-minute break.
I'll do a five-minute break.
Maybe it'll be early.
Why don't we just do a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Chelmsford Telemedia. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. And we are on, we'll start with Agenda Item Number Six, the Notice of Intent to Lay Out Charles Way.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Our Town Council, Paul Havity's here, and Tony Rapucci, our Town Engineer, is here. We have before you, on the agenda is a Notice of Intent to Lay Out Charles Way. Notice, we have the legal description, we have the plan that shows the proposed layout of Charles Way. We have, notice went out to the property owners through Town Council's office, notifying them of the, of the meeting that may take place on Thursday at 1:00 PM, you know, regarding the, I'm sorry, 2:30 PM. I'm sorry, 2:30, I misspoke. 2:30 PM regarding the layout of Charles Way. We have an agreement that's been agreed by Mr. Sheehan, as conveyed through Town Council. So, I think we pulled it all together. So, again, we're all here to answer any questions. How the process would work would be, if you're comfortable, after the discussion of the information that's presented to you, you would vote of your intent to lay out Charles Way. We would provide the formal notice to the Planning Board, which has this on their agenda for tomorrow evening's meeting. We would expect a recommendation from the Planning Board tomorrow evening. And then, as noted, you would meet on Thursday, the 13th, at 2:30 PM, for the purpose of the layout of Charles Way as a public way. And then, that would get filed in the Town Clerk's Office, the satisfactory seven-day period prior to the town meeting vote, which would be seven days after that on October 20th. So, that's where we're at at this point. I don't know if there's anything need to add, Tony or Paul.
Said it well.
Just a long, a long time coming, and a lot of effort in terms of bringing this to a satisfactory resolution for the residents on Charles Way, the abutting property owner, Mike Sheehan, and the town.
Any questions or comments?
One motion.
There's a motion in the packet?
Yep. So, I'll make a motion of intention to lay out Charles Way as a public way. I move that the Select Board votes its intention to lay out Charles Way as a public way. The parcel of land shown as Charles Way on a plan entitled "Street Acceptance Plans of Charles Way, Chelmsford, Massachusetts," dated October 5th, 2022, prepared by Farnsworth Engineering Associates of the town of Chelmsford, as depicted on the plans recorded in the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 146, Plan Six, and a forward and proposed layout, as shown on the plan, to the Planning Board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to General Law Chapter 41, Section 8, 1-1.
Second.
Or is that 8, 1, aye?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, this is a different, a different story, a more recent story. Navnasa Drive was a subdivision approved by the Planning Board, and it's recently been completed. You have the layout plan for Navnasa Drive in your folder. You have the ASBILT for Navnasa Drive. You have the legal description for Navnasa Drive. Similar, as the notice has gone out to the owner of the interest in the way, who is acknowledged receipt of the notice through council, as well as to the residents who have purchased, or the people who have purchased lots on Navnasa Drive. And again, if this were to move forward, that hearing would also be on October 13th, this Thursday, at 2:30 PM in this room, for the purposes of layout of the way. I think the only other side issue with this is, is the question about the proposed roads of the spurs that go off the end of the road. But what my understanding and council's here is, what's being proposed for acceptance is the roadway as constructed and paved and laid out, which is basically from Dunstable Road to the end of the cul-de-sac. The, what you see on the map there as proposed roads have not been constructed, and are not being considered for either the one that goes the Stone Hill Road, or the one that goes across the town line in Westford. And therefore, I think that alleviates any concerns that have been raised in the last several weeks regarding the impact of the street acceptance. If there's anything else to add, Paul?
No, the Town Manager is correct. The proposed roadways at the end of the cul-de-sac have not yet been constructed. They're not part of the proposed street acceptance. So, the issue of access via those roadways over the ways in Chelmsford is not being addressed as part of this process. It would not prevent, at some point in the future, the construction of those roadways, and then a subsequent request to accept them as public ways. But that's for another day, essentially.
So, you're saying this description is just for what's paved now?
Correct.
Do you have a question? Where, where does the safeguard come in? Where is there a safeguard for any future connection to that Westford town line?
The safeguard there would essentially be this exact process. So, if somebody wants to come in and actually construct those spurs, there's nothing that the town can do to prevent that. They're shown on an approved subdivision plan. In fact, the subdivision rules and regulations require them to be shown on a plan. But it requires going through this exact process. They would have to have a request for the roads to be accepted as public ways. It would have to go through all of this process again, a record, you know, the laying out by the board, the recommendation from the Planning Board, then the action by the board, and then town meeting approval, all of which, you know, would have to happen as a separate process than this process. So, one process really is not connected to the other. So, that's really what your safeguard is. Until that those roadways are constructed and approved as public ways, there cannot be any commercial traffic going over Navnasa Drive to the rest of the Chelmsford street system.
Do they go back to the Planning Board for those spurs? Or no, because the subdivision's already been approved?
The subdivision has already approved those spurs. So, they can be constructed, but they haven't been yet. And once they have been constructed, they would have to go through this exact street acceptance process. And the town, of course, is under no obligation to accept them as public ways.
Any other comments, questions, Mark?
So, if they were to construct them, if we didn't accept it as a public way, or the board didn't in the future, is there still any opportunity for traffic to go through there?
Residential traffic, yes. Commercial traffic, no, because that would be a zoning violation. Because to the extent that those portions are crossing over land located in Chelmsford, and therefore, a use that is not allowed in the underlying zoning district, that would be a zoning violation.
And how easy is that to enforce?
In this instance, much easier than other circumstances that might occur. In this instance, the commencement of the use would be very easy to pinpoint. The person making that use would also be very easy to pinpoint. And it would simply require an action from the zoning enforcement officer to cease and desist the use of the land within Chelmsford for commercial purposes.
And if a spur is not accepted as a public way, is there any way around that for commercial business?
No, then it remains a private way, and it's subject to the case law that says that you can't use property located in a residential zoning district to act, to access commercial district. It's only once it becomes a public way that that zoning provision goes away.
So, you, the private property owner couldn't make an agreement with the town of Westford or anything to let their trucks through? That would be precluded under the law?
Correct, because the issue is if they're going to create a zoning noncompliance in Chelmsford. And if that were to be the case, we could simply enforce zoning through the zoning enforcement officer. The only way that they're going to be able to use this roadway, those spurs, to access the commercial property in Westford, is if the town accepts those spurs as public ways. Or if, for some reason or other, at some point, Chelmsford rezones that area to commercial.
So, what's the downside if we don't accept this as a public way? I mean, who's it hurt, other than...
It hurts the property owner in Westford.
In Westford?
Correct.
Or in Chelmsford?
Oh, no, no, if we don't...
Oh, if you don't accept Navnasa. Then it hurts the property owners in Chelmsford, because then they're going to be continually responsible for the upgrade of the roadway, for the maintenance, the plowing. So, that's, who gets hurt if you don't accept this portion of Navnasa Way?
Okay. That's Ken, George?
I'm ready. I'm going to recuse out of this one.
Accusing? Pat, any thought, like, are you supportive of this, or...
I'm okay with it. I just hope that, that when, when somebody comes forward many years from now to accept these other spurs, that this discussion is remembered.
Yeah.
And I don't know how we do that, how we make that. And I don't know how we do that, how we make that definitive.
It'll be in the minutes and on the videotape that.
Right, yeah.
Yes, from now, people can research it.
That technology will still be available.
You making, you making a motion?
Well, I want to keep, I want to go around the table. You're all set, right? Mark, do you have anything more?
No, I have my concerns about this as well. I mean, I understand why it makes sense to make it a public way for the residents that are on there. I'm just concerned that it's starting to kick the door open a little bit for something downstream I don't think any of us sitting here want, would be my guess. So it's kind of that.
There's no way you can protect against that, right?
I know we have the proponents here. Does the board mind hearing from them, since this is related to a warrant article? We usually... Did you want to say something, Melissa?
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Melissa Robbins from the Law Firm of Farrell and Robbins. I would like to reiterate that this acceptance is just for these six lots. This is a standard subdivision in the Town of Chelmsford. We're asking for no more than that. If we had been at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, we could have told this board that the only reason that those spurs are shown on the subdivision plan is it's required by your own subdivision rules and regulations. I agree with you. It's confusing, and it looks like you're opening access into Westford, but that's not what's happening at all. The town has 100% safeguard from access into that area for industrial purposes, in that if we want to get that spur accepted, we would have to construct it and take that risk, and then come back to the planning board and the Board of Selectmen to go through this process again. And then the board, the Chelms, Town of Chelmsford at that time can make up a decision whether or not they want to accept the spur. But this roadway does nothing towards that whatsoever. And as to your concerns for access right now into Westford for all other uses, we could do that today. We could do it right now with a private road, even if you don't accept Navnasa Drive, we have that right, right now. We could build that spur and do every right that's, every use that's allowed between Westford and Chelmsford. So you accepting this does nothing towards that end. There's, there's no harm whatsoever in accepting this for six lots, except that you're going to be maintaining it for Chelmsford residents moving forward.
Thank you. Attorney Haverty, what's meant by we're required to put the spurs on the subdivision plan?
The subdivision rules and regulations, and Melissa may actually be able to speak to this better than I can, but the subdivision rules and regulations have a provision that requires connection to existing streets. And so that's why they had to put these spurs in there.
To show how they would connect if they were to do that in the future?
Yep.
But you have to show connection to all surrounding streets, not just Dunstable Road?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, it's any connected streets that you can connect to and lots you can connect to. So we show it coming off both, one going to Stonehill and one going to the other open lot that's next to this lot. So that's what your subdivision rules and regs require to be shown on the subdivision plans, that you could connect to them.
And I presume the reason for that is to prevent essentially spite strips and things of that nature, where you end a roadway just shy of somebody else's property so that they're not allowed to use it, even if it became a public way? That's what the intent likely is.
So Paul, is there something that can go in the, if the board were to approve this as a public way tonight, is there something that can go in the record in case this resurrects itself later or in the file?
Yeah, I mean, the official record of the minutes of the, the official.
Well, I know the minutes, but those don't typically go down in the community development director's office or wherever these things reside. Where, where does this reside that if somebody were to pull it up later, it could put, we could, that concern could be articulated for reference?
We, we basically filed this with the town clerk's office. So if the board does lay it out, we could attach something to the, to the filing in the town clerk's office, because that's, that is the, the official repository of the town's records. So we could do that, yeah.
Does that help?
I think Tony might have had something.
Oh, sure.
Oh, I thought he started to step up.
So do, do we want to, if you, if you want to make the motion about the public way, it would be for that paved portion, and do we want to put with that, that we want something on file with the clerk's records regarding the concern on connecting the spurs in the future?
Yeah, I think so.
You think so? Tony, did you want to say something?
I was just, just coming back.
Oh, you're just, just there? Okay.
Is there any questions about the paved way, the condition that it was done in, things of that nature?
And it will add to our Chapter 90 inventory of road, public roadway miles.
That's correct.
Very minor, but.
If there's no further discussion, could someone make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we vote our intention to lay out Navnasa Drive as a public way. The parcel of land shown as Navnasa Drive on a plan entitled Street Acceptance Plan, Navnasa Drive, Chelmsford, Massachusetts, dated September 8, 2022, prepared by Land Tech Consultants for Howard Stein Hudson, and forward the proposed layout to, on the plan to the planning board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to general law, Chapter 41, Section 81I, with additional notations to be maintained in the clerk's office regarding the spurs that we specifically do not approve.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four in favor, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When you get a chance, if you could sign that legal notice.
I did.
Okay, thank you. Get that to me. Thank you.
And so I see Evans on the call as well, so the planning board will turn both of these around by Thursday?
Yeah, Mike Raizbeck's in the, in the audience as well, and Nancy Yarrow.
Okay. All right, Paul, that takes us to sewer flows.
Yeah, moving into the sewer portion of our meeting, I, we do have the flows from the DPW for the month of September. The flow was above that of August. September only had 75% of normal rainfall for the month. So again, it's not a, a average month, but it certainly was wetter than August. So you can see the flow was back, was up to 61.86. And then if you look at the second chart, I sort of give some more historical data on the next slide, and you can see that, you can see how the, the flow is down from, you know, certainly the, almost 80 from last September, 75 from 2020, and, and not as much below the 2021. So obviously, we're running real low with the dry summer that we've had for the three months, but, and again, it didn't kick up to July's level, which was quite dry, but, so we're still running low. And again, we'll keep the board updated as, you know, the, the data flow can, conditions warrant. Thank you.
How many months of data do you need before you say this is no longer a problem? Like, if this continues for two years at that number?
You know, this is, this is the problem that we're seeing, and again, I'm not trying to get into the political thing of global warming and climate change and so forth. But what I'm hearing is we're just not getting normal seasons in recent years, to the point where you have a very wet summer, you know, where you had 85 last July, you could see the flow, and now we're at 61. I, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know, Ken. I think we just got to, just evaluate it as it comes in, in terms of flow issues and continue to, the whole macro issues of, I think the big telling thing is, is we, we will get months with heavy rainfall, and let's see how those data comes out compared to norms as well.
I'm just wondering, like, is it, you know, we'd be pushing the envelope, but if you went the other way and said, well, let's remove the sewer moratorium, and if we get, you know, six months where we're over flows, then put it back on?
Well, the problem with that is if, again, I know, I know we're just brainstorming. If you do that, you're going to get a rush of people who are going to propose for connections if the idea that the sewer regulations are, you know, ebbing and flowing depending upon weather conditions. I think that would be the concern.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we need at least a smudge buffer anyway, so I think I'd be a little bit concerned about doing that.
I just wonder if the powers that be, much higher up in the state, would do anything unless we were like, you know, screaming way over and they had to open the floodgates a little all the time. And I just, I just wonder how you force the hand of the, the federal government, the state government, to address this issue.
Okay. The next, the next item is the revisions to the sewer capacity and connections policy. We've placed the policy in your book again. Town engineer Tony Rapucci is here, town council Paul Haverty is here. The document has not changed since the, the last meeting. Again, this would become effective on November 1st and replace the sewer moratorium policy. And as was discussed at the last meeting, there, there is some flexibility in this new policy that allows for attached limited accessory apartments per the zoning bylaw to an existing single-family dwelling. Any increase to an existing residential developed property is allowed up to 500 gallons per day, so that would allow one or two family properties to add flows, such as a garage with a fixture or pool house. Any increase to an existing non-residential developed property, again, has a 500 gallon per day allowance, as long as, you know, doesn't exceed that. And then for non-residential developed or dual-use properties, it's, you know, the only change would be, again, what's allocated, but if there were, if the town were to adopt an accompanying sewer bank policy, which we'll, we'll get to shortly. I don't know if the board has any questions on the policy that will become effective on, on November 1st as presented at this point, and if council can address any concerns in terms of where we're at.
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I have, I do have a question. Under definitions, why does?
Which document are you in, Paul?
Oh, I'm on the sewer capacity and connection restriction, 1.3.
1 dash 3A definition?
Yeah, definitions. Why does it, I mean, if, if the change in use requires less, why, why would a decrease not be accounted? You know, like, some buildings, some, especially the, some of the redevelopment, the change in use is going to, by definition, require less, less usage, or less capacity into the sewer system than it, than, say, an office building, you know, warehouse versus an office building. So why is a decrease not, not going to be noted?
I, again, others can chime in. My thought on that, Pat, is uses of buildings, particularly non-residential, change over time, you know, in terms of tenancy. And I think what you end up doing is you could get to a point where you're only, you're, you're sort of, you're sort of maybe influencing who a landlord might accept as a tenant for use in, in terms of, so for example, let's use a property on, a given property, if the current use is less intense, then, let's say you had a small cafe or restaurant in there, you know, and then, and then all of a sudden it goes to a convenience store, which has less use. If that then becomes the, the new standard, then in the future would preclude them from going back to what was the original use of a small cafe or that type of use. And I don't think, I think that would almost be punitive and could have an adverse impact on the market in terms of who somebody wants to lease space to, depending upon their temporal use of a property. I mean, and unfortunately, we've seen properties change rather suddenly in terms of the, the given use. So, I mean, you know, something, let's, let's use an example of the CVS that used to be on Chelmsford Street that became the Med Express. You know, if that became a, you know, you could, depending upon what the flows are for those different types of uses, you know, if it went the other way and the CVS was a lesser use, then you couldn't then put the Med Express back in because, you know, you could just see how that could, I think, could just cause havoc in terms of the market. And so I think that's why it doesn't ebb and, you know, flow. I don't, I also don't see the downside to the community. If somebody's going to a less intensive use, it's not creating a problem with the system. I think our biggest concern is it gets to a point where you're, you're broaching on the limit of capacity in this impugitive action to the town, and then it really precludes residents or, or others from, you know, doing modest additions to their property. So I guess if you were to withhold usage, what would you then do with that withheld usage? Would you then reapportion it somewhere else? And then I think it becomes a.
I guess, I guess that's kind of what I'm getting at, yeah. Instead of having a sewer bank, you know, you, you then would have some more capacity that would open up.
Yeah, one of the problems you run into is the purchaser of the land.
How do you manage that? But like, take Miller's across from the Western School. They used to have, what, six or eight seats in the back and did food, and now they don't. I would think if you bought it and it had six or eight seats, now you're going to go to just a convenience store. The value of the property's going to go down. So right off the bat, the guy who's buying is going to take a hit, because the guy who's selling is going to say, well, it comes with six or eight seats. If you give it up, that's your own fault. I, I think it's going to dissentivize someone from buying land if they have a different use in mind.
Or what happened to Applebee's in Drum Hill with the Chase Bank, right? I mean, the, Applebee's had a flow, and then, you know, now the bank comes in, well, let's say the bank.
Has no flow.
Yeah, but no, the bank has no flow, but then let's say some use in the future, that, that site has a value for, for retail opportunities. I think it could just, like you said, I think it would just cut out the value of that property.
If we put this in place now, would it go back and affect them?
It's what, a 10-year period, right?
Yes.
It's a 10-year period. Yeah, so yeah.
Would you get the Chase Bank coming back and saying, you just killed my property value, I want to sue you?
Well, I don't think they can sue, but the regulations, after 10 years, we go by actual flows, they'd have a problem switching it over to a restaurant. Do you have more on that?
Well, I, I don't know. I guess I, I don't see how that, how that differs from allowing or not allowing based on the capacity that we have now, and then setting up a sewer bank, I, I don't know. I mean, I guess the way I see it, the, the use, the use as it is right now has a certain amount that it's allocated. And if that use changes, which if the use has to, say, go to the planning board to get approved for that change of use, then until it would come to the planning board again for a different change of use, it should be at that different capacity level. So to me, that would, that would give up that, that delta, as you say. And I don't know, I just have an, I just have an issue with businesses basically auctioning off their sewer capacity. I, I think if it's a public utility and you're not using it, then, you know, you don't hold it in your back pocket to, to maybe sell it to somebody else.
Oh, seriously? Use it or lose it, kind of?
Is this, I don't know, Pat, if this is related, but, and Paul, this sewer bank policy has a different and newer date on it than the previous one, so I don't know if something changed in it. I had trouble figuring that out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that when we get to that.
I don't want to, I don't want to leave Pat's question, but I don't know if this is related. So I had asked the question and, about, we have undeveloped properties and developed properties, and then I had asked the question about redevelopment, and I had talked to Attorney Haverty when I was with him in a different conversation. And so I wanted to try to get clarity on that, too, and I, in that, like you had mentioned, do we have to explicitly address if the use creates a greater sewer need then, and if the use has the same sewer need then, or if the use has a lesser sewer need then, in either the DPW document or this draft policy? And I don't want to get off of your question, but I don't know if those two are related.
Well, I see what you see. Yeah, that's kind of related.
Okay.
So what, so what's the, what's the specific question?
Paul Haverty, can you help me articulate this better? If you, if you remember the conversation?
Yeah, I vaguely remember that conversation. I mean, certainly, if we're talking about changes in uses that have an increased capacity, that's, that should be factored in here. And I'm pretty sure it is.
I think you're asking the same question, but for two different, for two different documents. So specifically, the sewer capacity connection restriction, it references the draft sewer bank, but it's not, the document isn't used, as you're saying, someone holding on to reduce flow for the sewer bank. So that would be addressed during the, throughout the sewer bank policy. While the, the sewer capacity connection restriction, which is mostly for developments that are trying to increase, having that 500 gallon per day limit, where if they were to decrease, there, there's no, they're not specifically spelled out in here as that would be an allowed usage. Since they're not increasing their sewer flow, then that would be allowed through DPW for the sewer capacity connection restriction. So you're asking a similar question, but I think you're just, you're, you're mixing the two together, where they're, they are two separate things. I don't know if that helps what you are asking about?
So I, I guess the question would be then, if, if the, if the new use does reduce the amount that they expect to, to use, or prove that they don't use over the 10-year period, is that capacity, that extra capacity, then available for somebody else?
Not currently. Currently, the way I understand the sewer bank, that, that. Currently, the way I understand the sewer bank, that's not, that can't be done, as you had mentioned, to auction off to anyone. And the way that the sewer capacity and connection restriction, they don't have that restriction as they're reducing their flow. And so we wouldn't have any issues with them connecting to the sewer for something less, necessarily. Then if it were to switch in a few years and we were to address the last 10 years, if it went from a restaurant to a bank from, instead of 10 years, you'd only have eight years as a restaurant and two years as a bank, their flow would be slightly less if it were to be sold off and then redeveloped again. But they wouldn't be able to then pocket the change, essentially, and then trade it off to another section of town. I don't think, the way I understand any of these documents, that's currently written in place.
Okay.
All right. I still have a confusion point on this whole thing.
So, I mean, a change in use that actually increases the sewer usage would be subject to the 500 gallon per day limit, correct?
That's correct.
So, any change in use that increases the sewer flow is subject to that, and if it's greater than that, it wouldn't be allowed.
Right. And so what happens is when a project comes in, it's evaluated by the Public Works Department for sewer flow.
That's correct. And so we use the 10, the last 10 years of usage, you know, deducting out if there's any issues or obvious reasons why, COVID, and there was, the building wasn't inhabited at the time, things of that nature, that would drastically impact that. But so we use that information for anything that's trying to increase the size. If anything's decreasing, it would still do the evaluation to confirm that they're using less sewer. And again, but that's for the capacity and connection restriction, which then the DPW would allow, or wouldn't have any issues with that property getting developed.
But that's, it's based on calculated flows, right? Not actual flows, because we're not measuring actual flows.
So those are the actual flows for the last 10 years.
How do you know what the actual flows of a building are?
So we have, it's based on the water usage that the building has, and so we have the historical data that we then take and then use that as our basis for the calculation.
So I still don't understand how redevelopment is covered in the sewer bank policy, because I don't see redevelopment as being a developed property. You're redeveloping it, and it's not an undeveloped property.
Well, if you look at Section 1.4 Subsection C, any increase to an existing-
Which document are you on?
Sewer capacity, because we're not on-
I'm on the sewer bank, but that's okay.
Any increase to an existing non-residential developed property, non-residential undeveloped property, or dual-use property with an increase in existing daily water usage not to exceed 500 gallons per day.
Paul, I don't know where you are.
Section 1.4 Subsection C.
Of what document? There is no 1.4C in anything I have.
Well, maybe I've got it, I'm looking at an older version. It was the sewer capacity and connection restrictions.
No, it only has a 1.4. 1.5C, residential undeveloped properties? That's not redevelopment.
I may be looking at an older version.
But even that document is still just developed and undeveloped, there's nothing-
1-6-1, sewer connection exceptions that are permitted under this article. Attached limited accessory apartments, B, any increase to existing residential developed property or an existing residential undeveloped property with an increasing sewer stub with a total daily usage of 500 gallons per day. And C, any increase to an existing non-residential developed property, non-residential undeveloped property, or dual-use property with an increase in existing daily water usage not to exceed 500 gallons per day.
And so because that redevelopment is not listed under this exemption, if it exceeds 500 gallons per day, it's not allowed.
Right. That's a non-residential developed property, so if it goes up by more than 500.
So let's go back to the Applebee's, to the bank. So once the bank has 10 years' worth of history, if somebody were to come in and want to make that a restaurant, probably they would not be able to.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So essentially, I mean, it appears that that ability to put that excess capacity into a sewer bank and to monetize it gets reduced every year that the change in use exists, because, you know, as you go forward in time and you're using less, you've got less essentially to barter up.
So if it was a bank for six, or five years, and its use is half, and you go back and do your 10, you're taking a 10-year average.
That's correct.
So it would, so it kind of, we could bank every year, knowing as these buildings have been sitting there longer and longer, and would that free up capacity for the rest of the town then?
That could also happen within a 10-year limit, as if we have the restriction in lesser used, or lesser sewer usage happens, then we might have more availability in 10 years' time where maybe we would have to address these documents one more time.
But, but again, you can't convey those unless you, if you're gonna get into the sewer bank, which we get into later, you can't convey this under, you can't convey this under this policy, so-
I'm not saying convey it, but they would go back to the town.
They would go back to the town, right. And therefore, that would be the, some additional capacity in the event more in-law apartments that developed over time, or what have the-
Yeah, I'm not saying convey, I'm just saying that it would show back up in our bank.
Exactly. It would show up, it would, it would provide the town with some additional capacity to absorb just buffer.
Yes, I'm sorry, I shouldn't use the word bank.
Yeah, the word bank is throwing at everybody.
You'd see it in the reduced usage.
Right. So if you had more and more of these projects go in, you could have these 10-year rollings and see how much extra buffer we're building.
Right.
So that then does actually create an additional incentive for a property owner to actually participate in the sewer bank policy, because it's going to be a diminishing asset. The longer that they go sitting on this without having monetized that sewer change, the less it's gonna be valuable, and after 10 years, it'll have no value to them.
But the restriction on that is if you want to participate in the sewer bank policy, you've gotta disconnect your connection, your sewer connection to, you know, which means you've gotta put in a septic system, you just can't allocate a portion of its flow to the sewer bank. The sewer bank is very strict in terms of how you can do that. I don't wanna go there.
Right. As a board, I think we're better off thinking of this as the policy, and the bank issue as a separate issue for now.
Exactly, yeah.
I agree, because I don't agree with the bank policy.
Right, that's fine. Right, but so far, there've been discussions about banking and conveying it to the sewer bank, well, that's a totally different animal.
Right.
And I just, what this does is-
This is a replacement of the moratorium.
This is a replacement of the moratorium, and what it does is it provides some additional, it has some ability to provide additional capacity for the town's sewer flow in the future, as the town develops over time, whether it's additional in-law apartments, or some expansion and so forth, within the limits of the 500 gallons per day on either residential or commercial property. You're right, so there is that downside.
Might build a buffer to keep more of the residents happy when they're doing these little projects.
Right. So the intent is not to hamper any of the residential developments, whether they're, mentioned before, the accessory apartments, or the two-family, one-family, they're adding a garage with a fixture or poolhouse, things of that nature. So those are all exemptions under this policy for residential use.
And how does the input from the Chelmsford Water District fit in not to all this?
They called me today and they said they would be at our next meeting.
Oh, they'll be here next time, okay, thank you.
But this is a DPW policy, right?
It's a DPW policy.
Yeah, so it's out of our hand.
And in three weeks, it's, the moratorium expires, three weeks from today, and I don't know what, where we would go other than this at this point in time. I understand the water districts and others oppose, opposition to septic systems and concern of the water supply, but I don't know what alternative could be pursued to address those concerns, given our lack of sewer capacity. And if it wasn't this, it was certainly, it was certainly gonna come from, it would certainly come from the MBTA zoning requirement, if, you know, one way or another, this, the town's gonna hit the sewer capacity limitations. So I just, I understand the concerns in the water district, I just don't, and they may have concerns about the sewer bank, but I don't know what we can do to assarge their concerns with this proposed policy, because I don't think it, I don't know what else we could do to further protect the water supply under this than what we have here, and be reasonable to the residents and commercial, existing commercial property owners.
Well, they'll be here next meeting. Did you want to talk about, are we done with the policy? You want to talk about the bank?
Okay, so there is a new date on the draft sewer bank policy, and the change, the only change is in the last sentence on Section 4.0. And basically, remember, we referenced, you know, maps in the downtown area, the simple thing to do was, is the language that I inserted, which is sewer bank credits may only be used for commercial purposes, and this is the new addition, in the community enhancement and investment zoning overlay district, in order to support economic development in the town. And therefore, it's a defined area by our bylaws, and it meets those areas that were in before, which was the center, 129, Drum Hill, Vinyl Square. That's in essence, what's commonly referred to as a COID zoning. So therefore, I thought the simplest thing was to just insert that language, other than having a bunch of attachments and maps and everything else. So it's the COID, you know, provision. And I know this is a time for public input, again, the only way that sewer units can be transferred is by a recorded permanent restriction on deed of the property, a cutting and capping of the sewer connection of the town's, at the town's right-of-way of the property owner's expense, and then providing an approved septic plan to the Board of Health, that the Board of Health would approve for the property, and deed restriction that permanently eliminates or reduces the right to convey sewer flow into the town sewer system. So again, it's meant to be for a particular application in terms of commercial development, which may involve some residential in those, in the areas of the COID zoning district.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll open it up for any public input.
Sue Rosa, Health Director for the town of Chelmsford. I will state upfront that I'm not as prepared as I usually am, because I only saw this draft today. However, I will say I have some serious concerns.
Excuse me, Sue, are you referring to the sewer bank or the policy doc?
The sewer bank policy. The draft policy, thank you. The way, the way that this policy is written, I have one question on page two, where a sewer unit is being defined as 200 gallons per day. I'm concerned with this mainly because, according to Title V, you have 110 gallons per day per bedroom. So how do you allocate 200 gallons per day to a single-family dwelling? It doesn't take into account one bedroom versus four bedrooms. So I have concern about that. I do see where the property owner has to accrue double what they would be, you know, giving up, so that goes under 3.1. A property owner may accrue one gallon per day of new flow for every two gallons of legally permitted I and I removed. I did want to reference, Pat, some of your concerns about, you know, the change in the use, and we talked about Applebee's and the fact that Applebee's used to be a restaurant, now it's a bank. And, you know, we talk about development, and we talk about growth. So just because right now it's a bank, if that bank goes under, and within two years, now you want a restaurant in there, if you automatically decrease their capacity, that can't even happen. So right there, you're cutting them off at their knees as far as what can go in that spot. And that is in Drum Hill, so that is in one of those areas. So that, that brings me, you know, some concern. The other thing, if you do have a four-bedroom house, and let's just say you only have two people living there, are people gonna be able to barter? Oh, well, I only have two people living here, when really, I could have eight people living here. So now this becomes a political nightmare. So you have this big, huge developer who may want to put in some kind of big, who knows, multifamily, commercial, whatever. They've got the money behind them to go to individual people to try to convince them to sell off their sewer capacity. That, to me, is a political nightmare. And then secondly, you turn around, and like Paul said, as soon as they give up their capacity, who, frankly, I don't know anybody in their right mind that would do that, they're capping off their connection. And again, they would have to get all of the permits and everything from us to connect to having a septic system put on site, but they would have to do all that testing upfront. And again, as Paul indicated, that would be on the homeowner to take on that expense. Putting in a septic system is an absolute huge expense. I do agree with the whole idea of the 10 years of, you know, of water use. People have always talked about, in the real estate world, resale. And your resale for your property is much higher if you're tied into town sewer. Now, we have the moratorium that has to go into effect, that's just, that's a given, we have no choice, because we're in capacity, we're at capacity, or almost there. So we've been working with that moratorium now for over a year. We've seen different developments come in that have had to go on to septic, and the Health Department, in all honesty, has had to do with some pretty extreme challenges along those lines, as far as people passing Title V and doing what's necessary in order for them to have septic. So I just think, I don't support this, I don't think it's to the benefit of people in this town, I don't think it's a benefit to any homeowner, I think the only person that it's gonna benefit here would be a big developer coming in. That's, you know, the way I see it. And I think that as far as property values and all that, you're much better off if you are tied into sewer, and why would anybody give up their sewer capacity?
Thank you. Any questions for Sue?
Thank you. Nancy Arroway, 65 Littleton Road, also Planning Board. Couple questions. You don't need to give me answers, but it would be good if you found some. Looking at the limitations on where those credits can be used, it's in the COID for commercial purposes. I'd like to point out that the COID was put in place with a, an importance upon the conversion of commercial use into multifamily with affordable housing elements. So I would, you know, ask the question of, can it be used for COID conversions for multifamily? Because it certainly doesn't look like it can, based on that decision, on that definition. The second thing is, how does this affect residential redevelopment? What we're seeing in Chelmsford is that we don't have any significant amount of developable residential lots. And instead, our development is going into buying up small houses on small lots that are on the low end of our housing market, and redeveloping those houses into four- or five-bedroom colonial, new colonials. I'm not really seeing in these, this proposal, how, how is it dealing with those? It does deal with in-laws, the addition of in-law apartments, but what about a full rebuild? And the third question that I'll put in front of you, the actual usage numbers that were reported here show very clearly that in dry years, our sewage flow is about 25% less than it is in wet years. Now, I am an engineer, but I'm not a hydraulics engineer, hygromy, whatever. I don't deal with groundwater. But, you know, that certainly says to me that we've got a problem with the influx of groundwater into our sewage system. And that influx is contributing 33% to our actual usage. And that's what's putting us into the red zone. So I would ask, what are we as a town, and what is the DPW doing about controlling this groundwater influx? Thank you.
Nancy?
Yeah.
So to that topic, I mean, we've discussed that extensively. So to that topic, I mean, we've discussed that extensively.
Yeah.
And we've actually discussed, so I'm just curious, I don't know how to say this, but you called, you know, you just-
What can you do about it?
No.
I don't know.
So we've run cameras up the pipes.
Yeah.
Right? So we know it's not coming in through the cracks in the leaks. And I'll just catch you up on our previous meetings if you haven't watched them. Our suspicion is that it's either-
Sump pumps.
Subpumps.
Or roof drains.
Or roof drains.
Yeah.
So the question is, what do you do about that? Because you can't knock on doors and just say, can I see your basement, please?
I don't know. Can you?
But we are looking into-
Can you institute an inspection program? I don't know what you can do legally.
Well, so we have the new superintendent of the DPW working on that.
Yeah.
And she has experience in this. So on that one, we just, you know, press the whole button until we get some answers from her. But that was our first thought is, because that's why we had the cameras run up all the pipes, was to take a peek and see where the water's coming from. And it's definitely not cracks in the pipes or infiltration coming in that way. So we already surmise that it's the subpumps are-
So it's at the local level.
She's going to try to look at flows at different pump stations-
At the usage level.
As associated to where there might be sump pumps, et cetera, et cetera, based on topography and everything else. So that was the big assessment that they were going to do to kind of, rather than spending the money to put cameras down every pipe in town-
Yeah.
Let's, let's take a more, you know, analytical approach to it. And that's what Christine was preparing to do before. She went out on return meeting.
So we have a major problem that, I mean, I don't, I don't have to tell you that in terms of the sewer capacity limiting the town growth and limiting the town revenue sources because it's limiting town growth. I, I just think we need to do everything we can to look at how we can get that volume down as opposed to stopping growth in the town.
Mm-hmm. Agree more.
My two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If there's nothing more from the board, we'll continue this at our next meeting. So next up, we have the zoning bylaw amendment, citizens petition. When we left off with this, and I know, oh. Let me ask the board the order. We had some questions for Attorney Haverty. We also have Chris LaValle, planning board members here. Who would you like to hear from first? Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Again, Chris LaValle, 10 Edgewood Street, Precinct 10, Town Meeting Rep. So I sent you a document earlier this week regarding some notes that I made after last select board meeting when Chairman Reisbeck mentioned some of the concerns that they had. And so I wanted to address only a couple of them here tonight, but you've got all of them in the document I sent. He did, he was concerned that this is counter to the master plan, specifically the accommodation of e-commerce. But I want to point out that retailers with e-commerce are still allowed with these bylaws and not impacted, as are warehouses, those are not impacted. And small and medium distribution centers are still allowed with Planning Board special permit under these proposed articles. The only use that would not be permitted under these articles is the large distribution centers. And I feel that the reason for that is that there are some uses we just don't want in town, and that would be one of them. Another concern he had was that we're really doing this superfluously, that the major business complex special permit process can control these projects. However, it's not yet clear if that special permit can control these large distribution center fulfillment centers. We have two of them being proposed right now in town, and both are still in process. It's a long, arduous process that this town and residents have to go through in order to prevent these massive distribution centers. It's unnecessary and cruel to the neighborhood residents. As, as an example, we have River Neck Road project, which everyone agrees is in a location that is not fit for a large 240,000 square foot distribution center. This project and proposal has been submitted in December of 2021. Public hearing started in January 2022. As of the next scheduled meeting, which I believe will be this week, it'll be going on for nine months. It was on the Planning Board agenda 12 times, 13 if you count this week, and it was continued at the request of the developer and not heard at the scheduled meeting six of those 12 times. That's a 50% cancellation rate. Some of the continuances occurred a week before, some the day before, and some the night of. So residents have had to attend all of these meetings, whether in person or online, and we have had to spend our nights and weekends researching why we feel that this is not a good project, when in fact, we should be able to just say, as a town, we feel that this is not appropriate for our town. And that process is only the Planning Board. The project still would need to go before Conservation Commission due to its proximity to the wetlands and nature preserve. So if a clear-cut case like River Neck Road project is so drawn out, what are the more complicated sites and locations going to be like? Can we really say that we should be putting our residents through that long process? And the third, the definition of a distribution center and warehouse, according to Chairman Reisbeck, are fuzzy, and that the Planning Board can deal with this without a bylaw. If the Planning Board can come up with adequate definitions, if they cannot come up with adequate definitions in the two years since the last proposed zoning changes, then they, then they have not been able to suggest more precise definitions since then, then what, why would we be able to come up with more precise definitions after that? The current definition of the warehouse is so broad that includes all warehouses, all distribution centers, all fulfillment centers, and all parcel hubs by right, by right in the IA zones in town. That includes River Neck, near Byham School, and a number of other locations in town. What we're asking for is to say, we don't want these large warehouses in town right now. Let's take the time, maybe down the road, if there is an overlay that is desired in a certain section of town, do an overlay to allow it there. But you can't do those overlays, even in the future, without restricting the uses in the underlying zoning. And in order to do that, you need the definitions. So we have to start somewhere. And this is where the citizens of Chelmsford are proposing to start. Thank you.
Nancy Arroway, 65 Littleton Road, and Planning Board. So I guess we're in rebuttal and rebuttal. The first thing I'd like to say is that warehouses are not permitted by right in all IA zones as was stated. Anything over 20,000 square feet, whether it is a by right usage or not, is a major business complex and requires a special permit. So no matter where they're putting any kind of use, commercial industrial use, over 20,000 square feet, it is a special permit that comes before the Planning Board for consideration of whether it is appropriate for that particular neighborhood. So I talked a little bit last time about the fact that e-commerce was seen as the business of the future and that the master plan looked to promote it and to permit it and to update our zoning bylaws to appropriately control it. We did indeed put an article forward, and it was indeed rejected. We've had multiple conversations over how to profile, how to define a distribution facility as opposed to other warehouse type uses. And because of the complexities and all the different kind of business models, we can't come up with a clear definition of what, what is a warehouse versus distribution. Chris has asked us to help with his definitions, and we tried to convince him that you can't control this based on what goes on inside the building. It's an external issue to the building, and we need to address it from the standpoint of the external uses, the external conditions. So Chris is right. In two years, we haven't been able to get the unfuzziness out of definitions because there's just too many business models. And the business model isn't the problem, the traffic's the problem. And yes, it takes forever on some of these projects. You know, if a project comes to the Planning Board and it's a project that truly aligns with what we're promoting and what we want to see, it can be approved in one or two meetings. If a major project comes to the Planning Board and it really doesn't align, it's pretty typical that it drags on for six months, 12 months. That's just true. And as much as we truly do appreciate public input, in this particular case, it has really slowed down that process. We're hearing the same things over and over and over and over again. And 90% of it is opinion, not facts that we can act on. And you know, it gets tiring for the Planning Board, too, as well as the public. I'm sorry, but it's just true. So these proposals define warehouses as being attached to manufacturing and as being business-to-business They define retail as anything that is selling product direct to the public. And they define distribution as something else that is handling product and shipping Warehouses today are not just permitted in IA, they're also permitted in a lot of our business zones. And they're implemented in a lot of our business zones. It's not at all untypical for a strip mall to include something that is distribution, that brings products in, sells them by e-commerce, and ships them out. Is that distribution or is it retail? I don't know. I just don't. And I'm the one that has to make those decisions as projects come in. So the last point I want to make is, if this is voted as three separate articles, and the first two pass, and the third one doesn't, as Chris says, well, that's no problem. It just means it's prohibited. Everything that's in those new definitions is now prohibited across town. Can't have it anywhere. So small distribution, that's out of the question. Can't do it anymore here. Not until we come up with a new, new overlay or something that changes that bylaw again. SIP contribution has gone from 27% to 17%. That's 10% of our overall budget that's now on the residents instead of the businesses. How much can we afford to continue to prohibit business in Chelmsford?
Deirdre Conley, 19 Bill Rickert Road, Town Meeting Rep. and also Planning Board. I just wanted to express my reasoning for my vote, which was in, in agreement with the passage of these warrant, the approval of these warrant articles. The Planning Board voted four to three, and I didn't feel like the other side of the argument had been at all represented. Couple of things before I start my overall argument. One of the things in the articles is that they define the primary use as what would dictate whether something was a distribution center or a retail or a B2B. And the thing that's meant to be prohibited is a distribution center. So if you had a business that was bringing things in and selling them and selling them to the public and/or shipping them out, that would be primarily retail. So that would not be defined as a distribution center. Distribution center would be something like Amazon or UPS. We already have a large one of those. Second of all, the, right after I joined the Planning Board, the next two weeks later, whatever it is, the warrant articles were brought about e-commerce that were turned back. And my understanding as a Town Meeting Rep. and as a new Planning Board member was that the idea was that Town Meeting wanted there not to be distribution centers, and that they were sending the message for, for us as a Planning Board to come back and come forward with better definitions and a better set of zoning guidelines, which, you know, however long, long later, that has not yet happened. I also think that you can draw a rather direct line from the fact that we failed to limit distribution centers at Town Meeting and by the Planning Board, that we've had two proposals brought forth. And now that this, these warrant articles are on the, on the warrant, we've had both of those come forward and seek subdivision A and Rs, which, without getting too technical, basically allows them, if this warrant article, if these warrant articles pass, they won't be subject to them because they already have asked for clarification that they won't have to abide by the new guidelines. There's another one coming forth tomorrow, someone looking for an A and R subdivision, which I haven't had a chance to look at because I was preparing for this, but my strong suspicion is that that's a similar, somebody hoping, wanting to keep their options open to be a distribution center if these warrant articles pass. And so they're going to make it so that they have that access to the current zoning. These articles would only exclude large distribution centers, and I feel like there's things in town that we don't want, whether it's girly bars or asphalt plants, that we don't want another one of. And so I feel like to say we shouldn't pass a law, pass a warrant that is going to prohibit greater than 100,000 square feet, or you could fudge that boundary line and call it 80,000 or 75,000. I'm not so bent on the number, but I feel like large distribution centers, we don't need more of them in town, whatever that exact parameter is. I'm afraid that if we don't pass these warrant articles, that the town will basically be saying, we want to make something more perfect. And any developer who has a property that they think might, they want to develop it in the future as a distribution center, they'll seek A and R subdivisions so that they won't be, or bring forth projects between now and whenever we get around to fixing this so that they won't be subject to it. so that they won't be subject to it. There's members of the Planning Board who voted against this because they felt like it was brought forward too quickly. I feel like it was brought forward after a year and a half and by townspeople who felt strongly and who have been meeting with us and negotiating and corroborating with us for three months and made some very, I feel like, important and worthwhile modifications of the article. And so I feel like that this is a, it's not, it's less important, frankly, to me if it was, you know, not perfect, because I think the important thing is it's a step forward. And I think we really need a step forward and a placeholder. And we shouldn't have the perfect be the opposite, be the, what is it?
Enemy of the good.
Thank you. Enemy of the good. So I am hopeful and optimistic that if this passes and we, as a Planning Board, want to make a better zoning bylaw that we have all the time we can, we need to work on that and to hone it and make it better. But in the meantime, we've put down a stake and held our place and said, we're not having any more large distribution centers in this town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad. Mike Raizbeck, Chairman of the Planning Board. And I'm glad you've gotten to hear from some more of the Planning Board on this. It was a very interesting discussion. And you heard most of what I said last time, so I won't go over that. But I do want to take you back to the notion of the major business complex and the fact that anything over 20,000 square feet is going to be looked at for traffic, for noise, for all of the things that are really and truly problematic, rather than what goes on inside the particular walls. And I spent some time, you know, dreaming up just odd little situations, some of them kind of comical, as to what might amount to a distribution center and what might not. I mean, you have a place that brings in trucks of plastic flamingos, pink flamingos, puts them in smaller boxes and sends them out. Is that a distribution center? Now suppose it's trucks coming in with boxes of plastic, and they have a printer, a 3D printer in the back, and they're making pink flamingos. And then you start going through all of the possibilities. What is a distribution center? What is a warehouse? What is a manufacturing capability? And what you really come down to is what you ought to regulate is the problem, not the use. And I think that the major business complex does that, and four of the Board felt that way. But clearly, distribution centers are a problem. Not every distribution center is going to get approved clearly, given that we have the major business complex special permit to take care of it. And I think that suffices. That's pretty much it. Any other questions, or I'll go back to my chair.
Thank you. Pat, what was the major question we had for Paul Maberty last night?
Well, one of my concerns was whether, why these are three separate articles and should we consider them together when we get to Town Meeting? Because is there an issue if one or two are passed and the other one is not?
There is an issue if, say, the first two pass, but then the use table bylaw does not pass. I had a conversation about this with my partner, Jonathan Silverstein, you know, who was with KP Law for years and is very familiar with this area of the law. And we didn't necessarily come to an agreement on what the result would be. Jonathan felt that if the underlying use is allowed currently, even though there's a new definition and there's an attempt to prohibit that use, if that definition, I'm sorry, if the use table portion is actually not approved, he believes that the new use, the newly-defined use, would automatically be allowed. I was a little bit hesitant to agree to that because essentially then you're allowing a use based upon a negative vote on an attempt to prohibit it. And that's, and I'm sure that would fall well below the two-thirds threshold for actually allowing a specific use. But that sort of does throw it into, you know, the area of confusion as to what the result would be. So I do think that if there's a way to take the three articles together on a single vote, that would be the best approach.
Okay. And there is no reason at Town Meeting why somebody couldn't make a motion to combine them as a consent agenda? I guess you could.
Correct.
Okay.
That was how we handled the stormwater bylaws recently. It was a consent agenda motion to take them simultaneous. But it's up to Town Meeting.
I don't know if this is a question for Evan or someone else, but I don't under, and I didn't see any discussion at all at the Planning Board meetings about the use, one aspect of the use table changes. Specifically, the current use tables allow are yes with the major business complex restriction in IA. They are by special permit in CB, which is the roadside commercial. And they are no in CC, which is the shopping center commercial. And this use table, instead of having it remain in CB, takes it out of CB and puts it into CC. And I don't understand the history behind why it was traditionally in CB. I saw the comment came up in one of the meetings, but I don't know if there was ever any discussion about it. I'm looking for history for a minute. Hang on, Chris.
Yep. So the discussion with the Planning Board was that initially, because we're changing the use table for distribution centers and not for warehouses. So the warehouse use line will remain as-is. It doesn't change. We're adding the distribution center lines to the table.
Okay. So what you're saying is this table you're proposing is an additional use table?
Additional lines in the use table. The warehouse line stays exactly as it would.
Could somebody help me understand if that is?
So wherever warehouses are allowed now, they still would be allowed by special permit or not special permit in the future. These articles are just intended to change what a warehouse is considered, what is considered a warehouse.
Okay. I guess I'm still confused as why you would allow a warehouse in a CB, not in a CC, but you would change that for a distribution center. Anybody else have comments?
Yeah, I had the same question about the CC.
I mean, I fully support the idea of this. My concern is the lack of alignment with the Planning Board right now and with the Master Plan Chair. And I'm really concerned about, well, I'm concerned about the legal risk if one or two passes and the second and third don't, or second or third don't. And I would really like to see this, the Planning Board get their issues resolved and get alignment around this and bring it forward rather than say, let's pass it and fix it later. That concerns me, too, because I'm not, I don't have a full understanding of what fix it later means.
I think it's very difficult also to distinguish warehouses and distribution centers during a time when everything, from a business standpoint, is changing so rapidly that, you know, these lines could get mixed very quickly. Sizes could get changed very quickly. And right now, you do have a situation where the Planning Board does have to approve these by special permit. And that's kind of the firewall for everything. And I'm not, I think the only thing that they're really trying to do here is say no to anything over 75,000. But there's a lot of other, there's a lot of other definitions and distinguishing in there that I don't really think is, I don't think it could be fully baked, actually, right now, because things are changing so fast. So, and I don't like the CC situation there with distribution by right in the CC. I didn't really like that. I'm not sure, like I said, adding an additional line for distribution centers makes the best sense right now either. So I'd like to see them together on it.
I would, too.
Well, yeah, I think you have to have the use table with these new definitions, obviously. I mean, if you have a new definition, you have to have a new use table for it.
Right. Well, I'm not fond of the whole thing.
Okay.
It's the bottom line.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'm kind of the opposite. You know, I appreciate the effort that has gone into everything here. My concern is that it's in three separate articles. And I would probably get up at Town Meeting and make a, you know, a motion that we combine all three and discuss them as one and vote on them as one so that we don't have the potential, who knows what, if one or two pass and the other one does not. But I, you know, and to your argument that the industry is changing, well, if we wait for everything to settle, we'll never do anything.
Right. But that's why we have a Planning Board.
Right. But that's why we have zoning bylaws, too.
They're there to distinguish, you know, what's coming in, where it's coming in, what it's going to produce. And I think, you know, Mike's point definitely is, it really is what's going on outside. It's what we're all concerned about is traffic. That's mainly what we're all concerned about, and I am, too. But, you know, this seems like a difficult way to approach it.
Well, I mean, I think it gives the Planning Board some guidance. That's how I look at it. And then if it is too strict or not strict enough, or some things don't mesh, we have Town Meeting twice a year.
Senator George?
I was waiting here. Everybody, let's talk. I do, I mean, you know, I went to a lot of meetings in the last five and a half years, and I watched the Planning Board do an excellent job and give us great guidance, and they've had some great leadership. And I've spoken to past Planning Board members about this, and I've heard from a lot of the current Planning Board members about this. And I've read Chris's presentations and gone through that. And I think I would like to see the Planning Board vet this out and come up with their own. Because I've heard that if this passes, even in parts and pieces, and even if it does pass, some of the stuff that's in here is already allowed, some of it's not, and it's just going to muddy the water with some of the definitions and so forth. So I would rather it go through, because that's what happens in the past. It flows through the Planning Board. We get very well-vetted articles to vote on that are thought out by the people who are making the decisions. And if we don't like the job they're doing, we vote them out and put someone new in, which has happened the last few years. So that's my feeling on it.
George?
I agree with Kenny. I think somebody has, they have to come up with one solid plan and stop changing this and changing that. It sounds like everybody has a different idea, you know. And it probably is traffic more than anything else that's the biggest problem. But I'd like to see them work together and see if they come up with the right plan. Did they all kind of agree on, the Planning Board being they?
So do, I'm sorry, were you done?
No. Thank you.
Do we want to vote on these as a package of three? I don't know if it makes sense to vote on it any other way, but.
That's fine with me, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
So you want a motion on all three?
Unless there's, yeah, go ahead, and then I'll see if there's more discussion.
All right. So I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article 21, 22, 23?
Leave a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? One against? Four? And thank you, Chris, and the Planning Board, for all your work. I'd like to see it continue. Paul, next up, we have Article 26.
Yeah, that's for the street acceptance of NavNasa Drive. We kind of went through that earlier, but you need to take.
I don't have the slide, so could we just vote on the article?
Yeah, you just vote on the article, whether you support the acceptance of NavNasa Drive. Recommend approval of.
So does it go from, did it already go to Planning Board?
No.
That's tomorrow.
No, but this Board isn't meeting before Town Meeting.
Right. No.
Assuming.
Assuming, assuming that the.
I mean, what if something funky comes out of the Planning Board conversation that affects our?
Well, then if you, on Thursday, don't do the layout, then it doesn't, there's no action at Town Meeting because there's no layout. Yeah. But assuming if everything were to move forward, you'll be asked your recommendation on Monday evening, or Thursday evening, I'm sorry. Thursday, next, the week from Thursday on the 20th, because we won't take this up until the 20th, even if we get to it, because of the seven-day requirement. But the moderator will ask the recommendation from the Select Board. So, I mean.
I just have a, to you, or either one of you.
We could vote conditional upon completion of the process.
Should I abstain from this also and then allowed to vote at Town Meeting?
Yes, right. The state's conflict of interest laws do not extend to Town Meeting members.
Right. But where, on a Board.
Yeah, this one, this one would be, yes. Yeah, this one.
That's your decision. Is that what you want to do?
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of Article 26.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye? I should have asked for discussion. Did you have any?
No. And then quickly, the recommendations on the October 20th special Town Meeting. The first one pertains to Charles Way acceptance. Again, we've kind of covered this early this evening, so.
Want a motion?
Yep.
Make a motion to recommend approval of Article 1 for the special Town Meeting to be held on October 20th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero.
And then the second article, if you may recall, is the extinguishment of the sewer easement at 255 Princeton Street, which, as Attorney Haverty described previous meeting, is sort of belt and suspenders of the vote that this Board previously took to extinguish the sewer easement, so.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article 2 for the special October 20th Town Meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So are we at easement reports now?
I have one, if anybody wants to go first.
I'm all set. Go ahead.
So last year, at, just around Halloween, we did Meet Your Ancestors Night at the burial grounds. And so I've been in touch with Linda Prescott. It looks like we're going to go forward again this year. It looks like we're going to go forward again this year on Saturday, the 29th, so just before Halloween. And I think it starts at sunset, 6:00 PM, and it's a couple-hour tour. And I think at this point, we're looking for one more male minuteman slash person to present, if someone's interested, and I think the rest of the spots are full, so it looks like we got a pretty good turnout on the volunteer side, but we'll be getting a formal announcement once we get everybody solidified in their spots, in their graves.
In their graves.
In their graves.
You too.
Yep.
Pat?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Last week, I went to the Police Academy graduation, and we had a graduate there, David Boyle. So congratulations to David and welcome to the force. We'll look forward to seeing him around town. A couple ribbon, recent ribbon cuttings. First last week, the Fitness Court out back here, there was a good turnout. The high school hockey team was there demonstrating all the equipment, and they did a very good job, so that was good to see, and I've seen other people using that already, so I think there's going to be a lot of use on it. And then today, we had FDE Hydro that had a ribbon cutting, and they are the, one of the leading-edge companies having to do with water infrastructure. They do a lot of stuff. I don't get a lot of what they do, but they do very good work at what they do, so welcome them to Chelmsford.
I'll explain it to you later.
Okay.
And just so everybody listening knows, the reason why the Fitness Court is blue is because it was.
Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Blue Cross, Blue Shield donated a large amount of money, so they get to pick the color, for anybody who keeps asking me, why is it blue?
Okay, Mark?
No, just other than to mention that Sean Carnathan did resign from the advisory board for CCA, so I'm sure hopefully we can find somebody that's a good replacement for him and, you know, to help support Lexi's ongoing direction that she has over there for CCA, which so far has looked fantastic. I mean, the Fall Fest was great, the open house that went with it was great, and, you know, I think it's off to a really good start, so.
Thank you. George?
All set, thanks.
I just have a couple. The Planning Board's public hearing, or agenda tomorrow includes the continuation of some public hearings, including that for the Riverneck Road campus. And from the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee, their Holiday Tree Lighting Committee is meeting on October 13th, and they welcome any participation from businesses or residents. You can contact Brian Kramer, Laura Lynn Maury, Joan Walters, or Joe Tierney, and you can mark your calendar for the holiday event on Saturday, December 3rd. And that's all I have. I will take a motion. It is 8:32.
I will make a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss with the strategy with respect to litigation, the North Chelmsford Water District PFAS claim, discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Ledge Road Commercial Trucking, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the firefighters, police patrol officers, police superior officers, and public safety dispatch unions, persons and general law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, and not to return to open session.
Second.
Mark?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Can I go to?
Right back.
We're going to go to room 200?